Rick Nez is present, Honorable Thomas Walker Junior.
I'm present.
Thomas Walker Junior is present, Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior.
Chairman Kayle is online, thank you.
Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior is present, Honorable Herman M. Daniels.
Good morning, present.
Herman M. Daniels present, Honorable Mark A. Freeland. Honorable Mark A. Freeland. Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior.
Present.
Wilson Stewart Junior is present, Chair, you have five members available, let's establish the form, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahai for that. Nantai, Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior, do you provide the invocation please? Honorable Begay. Honorable Stewart, could you do the prayer please?
Wishi, Chairman Shana, yes. Okay, Shana, Chairman Nez, Kudoshin, for this first meeting for the RDC for two thousand twenty-two. Ah, so Thomas, I don't understand, I can't. Those that should change, those who may as a kid, I always not again, when I'm trying to get this morning. Honestly, at eight, or Happy New Year, so we'll go ahead and say a short prayer this morning before we get in our meeting. And if I know, when it was on the list, not sound, you know, yeah, because it's a car and leaning. And the corner, John, I ate, I ate that a corner in the corner, it's just not jin, so it's the cost, lead the bands on. He died in the leggy, that's all the things that I'm gonna see that a corner in the corner, which machine to be, I should withstand and leaning corner. And the corner, so what's the question, after question, leaning corner. And the question, now Jesus Christ, leaning corner, bless the Virgin Mary, Joseph, angels, disciples, and clean corner. And the corner, it's a D, and then there's another clean corner, I'm here to the long, so the long, he didn't have long, but the one he wait, so it's not going to need it, so not as in the last morning corner. I get, with car, yeah, I get, yeah. The baby, without a, so now the negative, without a, so there's in the heart, did it not, or a, a, maybe, 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 just a, so this, I get any agenda, the resource development committee. Members in the community, that's not, and then it's really. I think me. Now, since I'm from the deep, I get a resource development committee members, and they begin to need, I get here, none, I create corner, our first meeting corner for two thousand twenty-two. I get any agenda, so the car, some because of Jage, in general, it is a detail, the one general, corner, it's not a delicious, the one general, but need to eat, or that. But yet they're, 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 I get, the house, because I'm giving, into the, I get, I got, no, I'm.
Walker. It is not either. Anyway, I said it through through the hell in through. Now, now, ah, Hassan, that's a good. It the whole year. Plus, in the middle of the house, it's so eh. But now, she had a door, but not. I quit. He could, eh, could. She not add all the classes. Add all, um, add on the end, she need to eh. A sheen, he needs. Now, the big patrol. As she's seen. Add all the truth, so eh, she said that it also did she did. That's another one. Okay, now, that show I get chairman is, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, Honorable Kiel and the gay junior.
Uh, Chairman. Add all RDC member, good morning. Add all Happy New Year. Twenty twenty two. Um. Could all should that she can not send it, add it, I is not. And I need nine, she don't care, only eh, that's a. I need that's a. I don't this, she need that's a. And what she 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 la la and that they put the shaggy eh, low me on. She could look at. So, I need kind with Nazini and many forms. Did I could all. I shall not, she is, and though, although my apology for not participating from the beginning, but. I do appreciate the prayer. Uh, could all sort of the 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 she be, now, it out, could all. And that is, add it, it's all bad here, now, it add it, this, uh, she can not send it, it do. But I think we don't need to that's it, it was, Chairman, thank you.
Here, so tell her. Doing a good job out there for your chapters. Honorable Daniels. Honorable Herman Daniels. Honorable Stewart.
Oh, should I, um, Chairman, again, yeah, in honor of, and I'm Chairman, I was just, I was a vice chair. I was in I can. I don't care, eh, yeah, new question, they just Wilson C Stewart, Junior, and she. Though it would so, the anciently, manage it, it's a Chinese, but she's changed. Touching the should change, that be between the channel. I don't, I could also, so then he just has not. Though, but had a shaggy, it's so, so, but she wants it, I don't need to. Um, the Forty Fifth Agency for Representing for Resource Development Committee. Uh, again, good morning and wish each and every one of you Happy New Year. For two thousand twenty two. That's all, should I, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Mr. Chair, um. Very much, um. My, my call dropped there. Uh. So, I'm back on. Mr. Chair, I thank you very much, could all, I don't should add, see, could all. Herman Daniels, Junior. Eh, you should see, I don't know, I don't know, and she need to. I don't get the Chinese, that's a. Has come, so that's a. I didn't, the toy head, Lenny. I created, I, I, that's a. What I didn't, and she. I could. The great, not if I. Or say, true, sure, true, that's why I can't even ask. What I need to have made all this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels, Honorable Freeland.
She, yeah, Rick, now, she, she, I'm watching, she, or say, touchy, but she's changed, so now, but she should change, okay, I need that's a. Now, I, yeah, the nation, it do. Lower fruitland, though, in a shot, San Juan Chapter has auto. I do, has Tongo Chapters, but not she gave San Juan Chapter. Said, I can hug, but. I mean, that is, uh, upper fruitland, Burnham, don't come, welcome, everybody, and Happy New Year to all of you. Do continue to pray for each other and take care of yourself and be safe out there. Yeah, honest, so, welcome to RDC meeting. Let me go to our colleagues, Honorable. Shema Yerzer. Who had so, though. Amber Kenes Barcari.
Yeah, thank you, um, she has Chairman. Uh, now, uh, resources and development committee members, uh, I appreciate the time, uh, Kia, I need. Next, let the the legal, but she's seen. That's she need that's a, though, the legal, that's a. Um, she, Amber Kenes Barcari, you know, she. Uh, to her, so, then, uh, represent Sheep Springs, Two Gray Hills, Torina, Sanoski. Red Valley Cove, Gadiya, Bokabato. Um, but all of our relatives here within the nation. Outside of the nation, across the world, um. Many blessings to you during this winter time and as we pray for moisture. And we just appreciate, uh, President Nez, Vice President Lizer for signing the legislation and. Bringing some more comfort to our hearts and minds, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Shema Yerzer, Honorable Carty, and we appreciate you sponsoring this legislation for our people too, so may God bless you. And your family, thank you. Just go to RDC staff, Mr. Tahi.
Good morning, Chair members of RDC and those online. Want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. My name is Rodney Tahie. I'm the Legislative Advisor to Resource and Development Committee. I'm Kiaani and Senja Kena. And I'm Reggie from Steamboat, Arizona. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ty, Ms. Woody.
Chairman, tell your freedom on the call.
Uh, Honorable Freeland, you can introduce yourself at the start.
Okay, uh, go after Ms. Woody. Come on. But I'm, Chairman.
Ms. Woody. Ms. Woody. Press star six.
Chair, I think she's having computer mic problems again.
Okay. Um, Ms. Khan.
Yeah, good morning, good morning, one and all, and Happy New Year to everyone, it's a beautiful. Time outside, I was outside yesterday and enjoying the snow and we are very, very blessed. Good morning, one and all, she, Mariana Khan, that's a. Don't need, and she need to eh, toy head, Lenny, she. But I, but she's seen, I should see, that's a. Senja Kena, that's a. I am here to assist with the Resources and Development Committee's call this morning. Although, I thought, I thought, yeah, please, one and all. Good morning and back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Uh, Ms. Woody. Ms. Woody. Okay, Honorable Mark Freeland.
Uh, good morning, uh, Chairman, I don't, should not, uh, colleagues. Staff, everyone on this call, good morning, I apologize for my tardiness, I was on a. Uh, nay easy chapter planning meeting, uh, call as well, so. I was giving my report and, uh, I, it's one to give a few updates. Um, she, Mark Freeland, she, though, uh, those, I need to talk to me, and she don't care, only eh, she's a. Eh, but she's seen, I don't, Senja Kena, that's a. She, I don't, so now, but she, eh, that's a. She's also to cut, yes, and I shot, I am, uh, represent eight chapters. Out of Eastern Agency, uh. She's also cut, though, not a, she's, she's, so, say, I. I don't, she'll, I'll, she need eh, I don't, um. Tell guy, though, he'll, I know, uh, hundred, they, do, nay, is eh, the eight chapters, as well as the twenty three other chapters. Um, from East Nava, who was a representative on the RDC Committee. Uh, Happy New Year to everyone, uh, Chairman, my colleagues, staff and your families. Uh, I hope, uh, each and every one of you, uh, the very best, I wish you the very best this year, um. And, uh, a great twenty twenty two for our, our great Navajo Nation and our people. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Ms. Woody. Miss Yako.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, uh, thank you, yeah, uh, in Chicago, Chairman, uh, Nez, the members of the Resources and Development Committee, uh, yeah, it been. Uh, she, yeah, Melinda, or Vito, she, I could, and she, though, uh, so, I didn't, she don't care, only but she's seen, totally, she need that's a, she, though, that's she need that's a. Uh, currently Legislative Staff Assistant for the Office of the Speaker, um, in Woodrock, Arizona, uh, thank you for having us on the call. I don't know, she, I, yeah, don't, I go to the, so, thank you very much, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Yako, for getting on the call and assisting us from Speaker's Office. Okay, you're doing a good job, Miss Yako, we appreciate you as well. Ms. Woody, are you on the call with us now? None, let's go to BIA, Ms. Cheryl Curly.
Thanks, yeah, it's. Chairman Nez, RDC Committee, um, Delia Carty. Everyone on this call, good morning, Happy New Year, uh, Cheryl Curly, BIA, tribal liaison, yeah.
Thank you for being on the call with us, Dr. Pearl Yoloman.
Yeah, eh, uh, good morning, honorable members of RDC. Uh, good morning to, um, twenty fourth Navajo Nation Council, members on the call as well. Um, and good morning to our leaders, President Jonathan Nez, Vice President Lizer, staff on the call. Um, Division of Community Development, we are on the call. And wishing everyone a Happy New Year, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Yoloman. We also have on the call with us this morning, Madam Chair. Of the Navajo Nation Water Rights Commission, Ms. Joel and Ashley.
Oh, yeah, eh, Ben, this is Joel and Ashley, uh, Chair for the Navajo Nation Water Rights Commission, I represent Western Agency. Coppermine Chapter, uh, Happy New Year to everyone on the call, I wish you. Health and safety for this upcoming New Year. And I look forward to working with the nation to. Continue to pursue the Navajo Nation Water Rights together, so, okay, yeah, it's a, turning it back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Do we have Dr. Tully Cordova? Do we have Dr. Tully Cordova?
Oh, yeah, it's a, Ben, uh, she, a crystal, Tully Cordova, you know, she had, totally, initially, that's like, that's, I mean, but she's changing, she's gone, it's a, initially, change, oh, he's cleaning it, that's another. I'm happy to be here today and to provide an update on the drought conditions in the area.
Thank you, Dr. Tully Cordova. Mr. Jason John, are you on the call? None, that question, uh, Ms. Michelle Brown Yazi?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, happy new year, yeah, it's a, Ben, uh, Michelle Brown Yazi, she, I cheat, and she, and if I'm not, I'm a shit, she's changing, and I'm a, and I'm a, just, you know, like. Uh, I am the Assistant Attorney General for the Water Rights Unit here at, uh, Navajo Nation DOJ. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much for being on the call with us. Anybody else from Department of Justice? None, Office of the President, Vice President?
Good morning, Chair, members of Resource and Development Committee, this is Davis Filfr from Office of the President, Vice President.